Meeting started. So if everyone can take your seat, just so you can stand up, because the first item on the agenda is to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the 1st Act of the United States of America, and to be the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome. We do have an agenda here, and actually, the first thing on the agenda we're going to do quickly is just to provide a welcome and for board members just to introduce themselves quickly. So I'm Patrick O'Dea. I'm on the Exeter School Board and the Chair of the Joint Board.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Meyer, and I serve on the Clockview School Board.
We also have, I'll point out online, we have two members joining us by Zoom.
Helen Joyce, I'm Chair of the Co-op Board, and thank you for accommodating me, and I appreciate it.
I don't think your mic's on.
Kim Casey from East Kingston, and I serve on the Co-op Board, and I also am not well enough to be there in person.
So Kim Casey and Helen Joyce.
Thank you.
Andy Herram, East Kingston.
Melissa Lyons, East Kingston Chair.
Tiffany DeBrio, East Kingston.
Jennifer Leonard, Kensington Chair.
Allison Roy, Kensington.
Jennifer Scrafford, Stratum.
Eric Herring, Stratum.
Erin Garcia de Pridis, Stratum.
Kate Davis, Stratum Chair.
Don Bullens, Exeter School Board Chair.
Patty Soret, Exeter School Board.
Susan Drinker, Exeter School Board.
Jenny Bishop, Newfields.
Jackie Tassaneri, Newfields Chair.
Brian Duffy, Brentwood.
Kate Bonifidi, Brentwood.
Megan Fitzgerald, Brentwood.
Letty Badar, Brentwood.
Allison Higgins, Brentwood Chair.
Scott Dennehy, Co-op Board, Brentwood.
Bill Goethe, Co-op Board, Exeter.
Paul Bauer, Vice Chair of the Cooperative Board from Newfields.
Travis Thompson, Co-op Board from Stratum.
And Bob Paul, Co-op Board, Kensington.
Ken, you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Ken Otto, Stratum Board.
Okay, so we are actually going to start this meeting. I'm going to ask for a motion to open the meeting by Don Bullens, because he's going to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public session required under NHRS A 91A 32C, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the Board.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, then we would take a roll call vote on that. So I'd say aye.
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 Okay, so we're going to go into non-public session. Because there are people here from the public, and we're set up for everything, we're going to ask the board members actually to leave the room instead of the public leave the room. We have a space set aside across the way. I would anticipate for folks that are here that, you know, want to be part of the meeting tonight and perhaps provide public input, that the non-public session will probably last about 10 to 15 minutes. So it won't be gone long, but gone for a few minutes, and we'll be right back.[301.02]
Yeah, there's like an end this time.
All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to order, the public session back for order. We just finished the quick non-public session. So first of all, I'm looking for another motion. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to let the two members on Zoom join remotely.
Okay, so it's a motion to let the two board members from the Co-op who are on Zoom be sort of official participants in this meeting. Who have a second?
A second.
Okay, who have a second? Any discussion on the motion? Okay, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, then the motion passed unanimously. All right, so the next item that we're going to do, we're going to do something slightly out of order in terms of the original agenda, which is just to give an update on the superintendent search process. So I'm going to ask the Chair of the Steering Committee, Allison Higgins, to give that update.
Okay, so I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and being part of this final interview process. But before we get started, we do want to spend a few minutes reviewing the process, just so that everybody is aware, sort of as the detail that we did, the details that we did follow. And I think that I hope that it will address some of the questions that we've seen, you know, brought to, brought in front of the board over the past couple of days. So first of all, I want to introduce the Steering Committee that was made up of the, of the joint board members. We had Kate Davis from Stratum, Don Bullins from Exeter, Jackie Tesaneri from Newfields, Allison Roy from Kensington, Andy Herron from East Kingston, I am from Allison Higgins, I'm from Brentwood, and then Bill Gautier and Paul Bauer from the Co-op made up the Steering Committee. All right, so to start with, the Joint Board met in August to discuss the attributes and the traits and the priorities for our next leader. We discussed the, also the process that we wanted to follow. It was during that meeting that the decision was made to complete an internal search for the next superintendent as our first step. Okay, that was identified as our first step. A Steering Committee was set up with the members from the seven districts that I just mentioned. And the message from the Joint Board to that Steering Committee was very clear, that any candidate that we brought forward back to the Joint Board tonight, that they had to meet a strict set of criteria that was identified through our process. And if the internal search did not bring forward a candidate that met that criteria, that we would regroup and head in a different direction. That was, that was our, that was what we were, the charter that we were asked to follow. So we met, that Steering Committee met at the beginning of the school year. We discussed what we wanted in our process. And there were, I think, two key focus areas that we wanted. We wanted transparency into the process, and we wanted to engage as many stakeholders as possible. So our two key initiatives were to develop a community survey, and to get as many responses as we could, and to hold discussion groups with six stakeholder groups that we had identified. Those stakeholder groups were students. We actually had two student stakeholder groups. We had a CMS one and a high school one. We had a stakeholder group for teachers, a separate one for paraprofessionals, a separate one for support staff, for administrators, and then, and then one for parents and community members. So I'm going to go through sort of what the findings, a highlight of the findings of both of those initiatives, and sort of what brought us here tonight. So a quick summary of the survey, the community survey. It was designed by that Steering Committee with, we went out and benchmarked surveys that other districts had done. We worked with, a lot with Heather Murray, who has guided us through this entire process. The, the survey was communicated electronically, but it was also communicated via poster in towns. You know, libraries, town halls, I put us one up at the Brentwood Country Store. We tried to reach, you know, people beyond just email. We ended up with 488 community members that participated in the survey, and all of those stakeholder groups, one of the questions was sort of what, what stakeholder group do you fall into? All of those stakeholder groups that I just mentioned were participants in the community survey, so we heard from all of them. The Steering Committee spent hours, hours poring through the survey data. We, we were holed up here for hours, we did it at home for hours, we used that data to guide our process. And so I, a couple kind of key, key things. One of the questions was, what are the top priorities for you, for the school district, right? Like what do you, here's a list of, I forget how many options there were, maybe 10, 12, and they're all important, but what are your priorities? And so all, across all stakeholder groups, the top three priorities, they weren't one, two, three for all groups, but within the top three for all groups, were student growth, right, academic rigor, student well-being, and 21st century skills, such as critical thinking, communication, collaboration, information literacy, technology literacy, right? So those, those skills that we want all of our students to have. And I will note that an inclusive culture was highlighted in the top by most of those groups, not all of them, which is why I didn't, didn't get put in, in the top three, but was highlighted by most of those groups as well. And then the second sort of objective question was, what are the most important skills that our next superintendent, our next leader has? And those, the things that rose to the top there were a strong student-centered decision-maker, demonstrated collaborative leadership, be approachable, accessible, and welcoming, and possess strong communication skills. Okay, so those were the two, like, big, big objective questions. And then there were hundreds and hundreds of comments, hundreds of comments, okay? I think there were two or three comment questions for 488 survey responses, okay? So lots. We spent hours reviewing all of the comments, and we themed them up into kind of five main categories, all of which I covered already, with the exception of the word transparency. Transparency was probably the most stated thing behind academic rigor in, in the survey. So, so add transparency there. So there's one comment that I pulled out when I read it, that I thought captured sort of the essence of, of all of the feedback, so I'm going to read it. So the comment says, this is, you know, related to what they're, what they want our next leader to, to do and to be. They want them to empower educators and school administrators to do what they know best works for learner's success, to listen to the community, but not to back down from sound, reasoned facts and policy, to provide strong, student-first leadership and decision-making. So that was our charter, to find, you know, a candidate that met that criteria. All right? So with the survey information, we moved on to the second step, which was the stakeholder discussion groups. We wanted these groups to be inclusive of all types of opinions and perspectives. So the groups were formed using the following process. Teachers were asked to select, each teacher's union was asked to select a representative, somebody to represent them. We did not want hand-selected participants. We wanted, we wanted stakeholders to select who they wanted. Okay, so teachers by each union, paras, each union or district selected a representative. Administrators were all included. Support staff, each school selected a representative. Students, all right, students, a discussion group was held at the high school and at CMS, and the principals were given some guidance or direction. We wanted representatives from the various grades, we wanted representatives from the various towns, we wanted the groups to have diversity in them. And then the last group was the parent and community member. Once again, we felt really strongly that these not be hand-selected, so we took all of the names by town that came in through the search process, that came in through emails, we put them in a random generator, and we picked two from each town. You know, there's a debate whether we could have done something different, but what we were looking for was transparency, and we were looking for varying perspectives, and we felt like, you know, that would get us that. So, so that's how the stakeholders were selected. So we realize that some people feel that the selection process was unfair to certain groups, but I just want to assure you that a lot of time and energy went into this process. We cared passionately that we facilitated a good process. So we tried to include people with diverse experiences, diverse perspectives, diverse opinions. We, you know, did not want them handpicked. We wanted them to be transparent and accessible to everybody. So what the discussion groups entailed were, each discussion group got, met on October 25th, I believe. They had 45 to 50 minutes. We provided them with the list of the major focus areas, the academic rigor, student well-being, communication, transparency, the DEIJ, but we let those discussion groups guide their own discussions as to what was important to them. So we, each group had to complete a feedback form and provide it to the Steering Committee, and they had to select a member from that, that discussion group to come sit on the initial interview process. So the major takeaway from the discussion groups was, in the feedback forms, every single discussion group, all seven of them, rated the candidate as favorable or very favorable. Not one discussion group rated them anything but that, okay? And so that gave us, you know, pretty positive feedback from over 70 members of our community. All right? So the Steering Committee used the survey information and the feedback form to form discussion groups to craft 11 questions that were used for the first round of interviews that was held last week, November 1st. That night, 15 interview participants. There were the eight board members that I just introduced you all to, and then there were seven discussion group members, okay? So there was a high school student, a CMS student, a teacher, a para, a support staff, and administrator, and a parent. Okay? We interviewed the candidate, we met with the candidate for 90 minutes. At the completion of the interview, the 15 participants met to discuss their impressions of the candidate and to vote on whether they wanted to move them forward to tonight. And it was a unanimous vote. All 15 members, not board members, but all 15 members, including all of those stakeholder groups unanimously voted to move the candidate forward to tonight. So in summary, I just want to be really clear. Our goal was to find a candidate that met the needs identified by the community that we represent. We took that seriously, and we did our very best. Will we learn and make some changes next time? Probably, but we tried really hard, okay? We included as many stakeholders in the, we spent, included many stakeholders in the process. We spent hours and hours reviewing, reviewing feedback and incorporating it into each next step. The representatives from the Joint Board made, that made up the Steering Committee facilitated the search process, but we did not make the decision to move the candidate, candidate forward unilaterally, but in collaboration with the stakeholders in this community. So tonight is the last step in that process. We will interview the candidate in the public interview tonight, and then we will move back into a non-public forum to have a discussion. And then we move back, back into public to take a vote tonight. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next on our agenda is public input. We have a policy that's policy BEDH, which doesn't really mean anything, except it's just a way to refer to policies. It's a public input policy at board meetings. And one component of it is that it complies with a law that was passed this past legislative session that requires there be at least 30 minutes set aside for public input. So tonight, we'll provide at least 30 minutes for public input. The policy does state that it's limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If there is a need to extend the session, then the board would have to vote as a whole to extend the session. But we'll start off with setting aside 30 minutes, and if anyone would like to speak, they can come forward, come to the microphone. I'll ask that you just identify yourself and what town you're from, and the three minutes are yours. So would anyone like to provide public input?
Liz Feria from Brentwood. I'm just wondering how transparent you think the process was when in July, 23 members of the Joint Board, which means 10 weren't there, 23 members of the Joint Board decided in July that they would have an internal candidate. That's crossing out a lot of the population. Many of us did not become part of the process because we did not want an internal candidate. And you voted 19 to four in, on July 20th for an internal candidate. I did not think we had a qualified internal candidate, so I did not want to be part of the process because the process was already broken. So that was not transparent. I was on the Joint Board for 10 years. We never had a July meeting. This was not okay. So before you had a committee, and before you had the survey, and before you had the questions, it was already not transparent and not okay. My second comment is, in the recently passed SAU 16 administration budget, you have, the superintendent should get paid as a salary $200,000. Esther Asbell currently makes less than $157,000. So my question is, are you going to give her a $43,000 raise?
Anyone else like to make public comment? So if you can just, again, just to state your name and what town you're from to start.
Yeah, sure. Devin Skerritt from here in Exeter. My first comment is about the process, and the second is about priorities. So in terms of the process, I appreciated hearing about how the process came about. It raised some questions for me that included, I didn't hear what the Joint Board's priorities were described in the discussion that was given, although we did hear a lot in really helpful detail about there being alignment with what the survey was. So I'm guessing that those were the same, but I just can't recall hearing early on, when this process started, what the Joint Board's priorities were. Related to that, this might be a research thing, but like, it's helpful for me to understand what's the scale when you say favorable and very favorable? Like, are those the best two options, or are they not? Ultimately, at the end of the day, I was sad that, as a community member, I wasn't chosen to participate in any venue beyond this, which just feels like I'm catching up to a train that has left the station. So that said, my second comment is to, I think, reiterate that the priorities that were listed as rising to the top in the survey, I share a lot of those. I would just underscore that the efforts of this district uniquely and through no easy feats to advance diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, which I personally find is foundational to how my daughter and my son approach learning and how we construct learning communities for everybody. It just seems really important to me, and I appreciated hearing a point about it, that we not lose sight of the efforts that this district has made in our selection of the next superintendent. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make public comment? Okay, we're going to keep public comment open until 7:15. We started about 6:45. So if anyone wants to make public comment at any time between now and 7:15, just get my attention and come forward, okay? So that's pretty easy. You don't, it's, everyone has a right, it's a member of the public, to make comment at any time within that 30-minute window, okay? So there were, there were a couple of questions, points that were directed to the board. I don't know if anyone wants to address any of them. I'm going to address one of them, but I don't know if others have some comment about that. I'm going to address something relative to the, there's a question about $200,000, and that being a part of the budget. I can tell you that that number was put in there as a placeholder. That is, there's no understanding of what is going to be offered to a superintendent candidate, whether it's through a decision that's made tonight, or a decision that's made in the future. Some of that was based on the Steering Committee doing some benchmarking. And I should, I should add, I was an ex officio, non-voting member of the Steering Committee, so I participated in the process, but didn't vote on anything, but I listened in to the discussion. And there was some benchmarking about what superintendents are offered across the state, and sort of projecting that forward. I think it was, it was put in as a placeholder as a potential salary range, sort of up to that, but wouldn't exceed that. Doesn't mean that that's what would be offered to a candidate necessarily. That would be a decision of the Joint Board that would happen if, whenever the board decides to make an offer to a candidate. Are there other, anyone else want to make any other comments about any questions or thoughts that came up?
So the two questions, that, Devin, your two questions about the Joint Board priorities. So we had an activity when we met as a Joint Board, and we, the priorities that, that we came up with that night, and the traits, the things that we wanted, were perfectly aligned with the community survey. So that is really just why I didn't reiterate them. They, they quite honestly mimicked the community survey. So I'm sorry, I didn't include that. And the second thing, I just wanted to comment about, related to the survey results with diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. So what I'm reading from is just my own sort of personal notes of, of the themes that we pulled out of the 488 comments, okay? And so there, so my, the notes are that there were many mentions about the DEIJ program in the survey. More than half of the comments associated with the program supported it, right? There were some that did not, but more than half supported it. But an overwhelming majority supported the district fostering a safe and inclusive environment for students to learn and staff to work in. Okay? So, so even comments that didn't explicitly mention the program were, I mean, very plentiful in that we want a safe, inclusive environment for our students and our staff to thrive in. And so that's sort of the theme that we, that we brought forward in the rest of the activities.
Allison, can you say something about what the scale was for?
Oh, yes. The scale was a four-point scale. So favorable and very favorable were the top two selections.
And what were the other two possibilities?
Sorry, I have a lot of people at work here.
Was it just unfavorable and very unfavorable?
It was...
That's okay. We can circle back to Allison, if you have that information, just.
Yeah, I, I'll look it up quickly.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to, Allison, just pause there for a moment. Helen Joyce, who's joining us by Zoom, would like to make a comment. We're going to see if we can do this here using a laptop and sophisticated technology here. So I know you can't see Helen, but hopefully you'll be able to hear her voice.
Thank you so much. I wanted to address the issue with regard to the July meeting. I wanted to point out that that meeting was held in public. It was also a meeting that was posted, the agenda was posted in advance of the meeting, so the public was aware or could have been made aware of the fact that the meeting was going to take place. I want to add that we deliberated that night. We were there for three to four hours as a Joint Board, and we covered every possible variable with regard to the pros and cons of holding an internal versus an external search. It was, it was a very good discussion. Folks were, everybody had an opportunity to voice their opinion with regard to this, offering a number of different perspectives. And it was made clear that night that we would start with an internal search because there were eight possible candidates internally who would have fit the bill on this particular, who were qualified, I should say, for this particular position. who were qualified, I should say, for this particular position. And secondly, the fact that if it did not pan out, if you could not find an internal candidate, we would open it up to an external search, hence the reason for starting so early. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public, so everybody knew what was going on with regard to that meeting. Thank you.
Allison, just to piggyback on that for a moment here, so folks understand the discussion in July, and I know there's a mention about it's an August meeting, but one of the public comment by Liz Freya mentioned a July meeting, and that was actually when that discussion happened. And there were three possibilities that were put to vote with, with the joint board. One was to do an external search, one was to do an internal search, and the third was to do an internal appointment. Both the external search and internal search had some support by board members. There was no support for an internal appointment. Ultimately, the, out of the three possibilities, the one that carried the day was an internal search, at least as an initial matter. So there was a discussion of all three possibilities, though.
And thanks, Patrick. And I, I just want to add, I've served on the school board for seven years. No, you're a lot longer. And our meeting schedule has changed dramatically during the last two and a half years. What was a four- to five-hour commitment dramatically increased during COVID. So we are diligent to post meetings because we've had to have a lot more meetings and through the summers to deal with the events of the last two and a half years. So that's it.
Allison, did you have something about the scale?
The responses were very favorable, favorable, somewhat favorable, and unfavorable.
Okay.
And I guess this is, I'm just speaking for myself personally, in sort of one of the factors that influenced my vote that night, so once again, this is just for me. But any good organization invests in its people, and you invested your leadership pipeline. And that is something that, as a joint board, was supported over the years. And it wasn't the only factor that night for me. But we, we did invest heavily in our, we do invest heavily in our people. And so we, I was curious as to see, you know, sort of what the internal search, what the payoff for that investment would, would be through an internal search. So that is just me personally, but it was a factor.
So I'm going to move forward with the agenda, and again, I'll just remind folks that are here, that are here from the public, that we are keeping public input open until 7:15. So if anyone would like to come forward that hasn't come forward, Liz, I'm sorry, you get one opportunity to come forward. I apologize if I wasn't clear about that. That's part of our policy. Everyone has one opportunity. So if anyone would like to come forward that hasn't had an opportunity to speak and would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to do it. Just get my attention. We'll, we'll sort of suspend whatever we're working on the meeting and make sure that we provide room for that public input. What I'm going to move forward with is looking at approval of minutes. We last met on October 17th, 2022, and we had public meeting minutes from that. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here for that meeting, but I know others were. And so I'd be looking for, and also I wanted to thank Melissa for chairing the meeting, by the way. She, I understand she did an awesome job, which isn't surprising. And I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes, and if, and we can have a discussion if anyone wants to make any sort of amendments and whatnot here, we can, we can do that. Or if someone just wants to bring up things that they noticed in the minutes that are in need of change.
I, I noticed one thing. Allison Roy was not here, and she's marked as present.
Okay.
But also several of, I believe it was Allison Higgins' comments, were attributed to Allison Roy. So that needs to go through. I don't have it right in front of me. If you look, you'll know what you said. And also, she wasn't here, so. It was just the wrong Allison, I think, yeah.
Okay, so the, it's the wrong Allison that things were attributed to?
Yes.
On the minutes, it sounds like.
Yes.
So that's a correction. And then the correction that Allison Roy was here but listed as not present?
No, she was not.
She was not here? Okay.
She's listed as present.
I'm sorry. So Allison, she should be listed as not present. Okay. Any other corrections that people want to raise? Okay, let's, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes with corrections. Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'm moved.
Who is it?
Travis.
Travis? Okay, so Travis made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so I'm willing to make a second. Any further discussion or any discussion about the minutes? Okay, then all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then abstentions for folks that weren't here, include me. I know Allison, you have to raise your hand, right? It looks like there are one, it's Allison Roy, just, I see. So we also have the two people on Zoom, Helen and Kim, and then Allison, Paul, it looks like Bill. So we, we got it here. Yep, okay. So, all right. Okay, so that's, that takes care of that. So the next thing on the agenda is SAU 16 new business and updates. Is there any new business that we want to discuss or any updates that we want to try to provide? I know we don't have administrators here necessarily to, to give, you know, sort of traditional updates, but any, anything that folks want to share that they think would be a helpful update to provide about something that's going on in the SAU?
I just had a question. This policy, BEDH, this is for the co-op, is the one for the joint board the same?
It is the same.
Okay.
Yeah, and it should say that. It looks like we don't have that yet. I will tell you, one of the things that came up in the policy committee, so maybe this is a good opportunity to talk about that, is that there is a real need to develop sort of a joint board policy manual, probably a slimmer manual, but a policy manual. There's another policy that talks about forum, for example, that's part of the cooperative board policy manual. But it's actually a joint board policy. And the same thing would be true of this. We adopted the same policy as the co-op, as it turned out, because they didn't make amendments to it. But it really should be listed separately as a joint board policy. I know that's one of the things that that committee is going to be talking about and recommending some policies to be a part of it. Not a 50-policy manual, but it may be, I don't know, half a dozen, a dozen, whatever it is that seems appropriate. Other thoughts on SAU 16 updates, things that are happening that would be helpful for folks to hear about? Well, let's talk about, this is why I'm not a politician, I'm not good with this, talking nonstop, but contrary to popular belief. So let's, let's try to give an update on some of the things that are coming up. So first of all, there's, in terms of joint board meetings, we have a meeting scheduled in January, January 23rd, and then one in April 17th and May 22nd. One of the things that's coming up throughout the district, as we sort of look ahead here, is that this is budget season in most of our towns. So there's, even though the SAU budget was sort of looked at initially, the reason why we do that earlier in the process is because that budget is sort of factored into the individual town budgets. So right now, school boards are looking at issues of budgets, potentially having budget workshops. Most of those budgets will be approved in December because there needs to be an opportunity to sort of create warrant articles and do those sorts of things. So that'll be coming up in the next, you know, between now and the, and the end of the calendar year. In the beginning of next year, one of the things is, I know I've gotten questions about how do you join the school board? It's a popular thing to join, so I know everyone wants to get in on it. The, there's an opportunity at the end of January, I don't have the dates, and I know it varies slightly from year to year, but there's an opportunity to sign up at the SAU office. At one point in time, you had to pay a dollar. You don't have to pay a dollar anymore. It's free to sign up. And you can run for school board, and then they have the elections in mid-March. I think it ends up being the second Tuesday in March. It tends to be the same night as the actual school board meeting, it turns out. And that will be an opportunity to vote on both the budgets as well as anyone that wants to run for school board. So we always encourage people to run for school board. I will say that as someone who's, you know, been an incumbent and run, I think it's really healthy to have other people run. And sometimes, unfortunately, there are positions that go uncontested, or there are positions that go unfilled. So we certainly need people from the community to join, particularly those folks that may have different perspectives, so that we can really represent all of the broader community that, within our towns and as a joint board, to really get all those different perspectives. So we would welcome people to join the board and consider running. I'm sure Kim has given a good advertisement for that, talking about how it's now a bigger time commitment and there are more meetings throughout the year. I think that, you know, has, that has been a right reality as of late, but I, you know, I think it, it does vary from board to board. The co-op board tends to be more intensive in terms of time commitments and the number of committees they work with. They have a number of separate schools that they supervise and, and work with, so they have a broader scope. Some of the boards meet much less frequently, and, I mean, they still meet monthly, but they don't have the same.
Is that a plug for your board instead?
They don't have the same level of committee, sort of, assignments where they're meeting every week, potentially. So if, if anyone's curious about any of those things, I would certainly encourage folks to come talk to any member of the school board. So I know we have Tiffany and Jennifer, and I see Helen online, so sort of taking that order to folks that want to make a comment. So Tiffany, make sure you're speaking to the microphone so people can hear you.
I just had a correction that the candidates wouldn't be filing at the SAU 16 office, it would be at their town offices. The SAU is no longer handling.
That's a great, I'm sorry, thank you for that clarification. That was misinformation.
You're welcome.
You're right. That was a good, that's a good clarification. That was something that was changed, and I think it was actually in response to concerns to make sure that it's being done correctly and equitably and whatnot. And town offices are really skilled in how to handle that process, so, so yeah, that is it. Thank you. That's a, that's a great correction.
I also just wanted to make comment that we had a board member resign, so we currently in New Fields have a position open. And if you're interested, you can email Chris Andruski with your resume and intent to become part of our board.
What's the process that will happen in terms of selecting that new member?
The process is to email Chris. And then they, at our next meeting, which is December 8th, we will be meeting prior to our meeting to do a short interview with each candidate. And we'll appoint them to the board.
That sounds great. And I, and I know in terms of that process, too, the other thing that happens is that someone is appointed for the, to fill out the remainder of this year's term. So even if they had a three-year term and left in the middle, they really only go until the next election. So it would be between now and, and March that they would fill, and that they could run if they wanted to, or they could just fill the slot for that period of time. So I'm going to go to Helen, who was next, that she had a comment.
Actually, Patrick, thank you. I just want, I was going to mention that everything had been moved to the town offices, but Tiffany has already taken care of that. That includes the co-op board positions as well.
Did folks hear that? I know it's a little difficult to hear. Helen just reiterated that Tiffany made the, you know, the right correction and includes the co-op positions, which have also been moved to town offices. Yes? Go ahead.
So, not related to that, but I just want to, like, as joint, I don't know, district news, like, I know that elementary schools just finished a really awesome cross-country season, and it was like a really cool thing to see all of the kids at the elementary school level participating in that in such a supportive way. And I know that at the high school, I think the field hockey team and the golf team won the state championship. I don't know if there's any more, but I just want to say congratulations to them.
Yeah.
I was gonna, do you mind if I piggyback on that just a little bit? Because I had that up, too. So the varsity golf team and the field hockey team and the unified soccer all won state titles. And that, so that's really great to see the students stepping up. But most teams at the high school did really well this year, including there's a football game, the quarterfinals are this Saturday at 1:00 in Timber Lane, so please show up and support our football team.
Other thoughts on things that are going on around the SAU or things that are going on in your local town that would be helpful for people to hear about?
Would you like me to cover the interview processes in public?
Sure. We can certainly introduce that. We can introduce what the interview process is, so folks have a sense of what that's, what's going to happen here as we transition out of the public input session.
So when the interview starts at 7:15, we will allow the candidate to make some opening remarks if she would like, and then we have nine questions. Each board was assigned a topic based on all of the information I provided you guys earlier. And so as an example, Brentwood has leadership as our topic, so we crafted a question as a board, and one of our members will answer it. Each question, we're allowing up to two to three prompts from board members, like follow-up type questions, and then we'll move on to the second question. And our expectation is, I think roughly 90 minutes, I don't know, ish, to allow for the interview discussion. So, that's it.
Sounds good. One other thing also, I think it'd be helpful, just to clarify for folks, to make sure we're all on the same page about this. I think Allison referenced this earlier, but in terms of the process, that interview that was held with discussion group members and members of the steering committee, it was called the interview committee, they had sort of full authority with not to move any candidates forward. If we had had five or six candidates, they could have chosen two of them. As it turned out, we had one candidate. But they, that, that group was empowered to make a decision on with not to even move the candidate forward. Same thing is true for tonight. And I, I know that there was commentary about whether or not those initial phases had been favorable or not. If they hadn't been favorable, we wouldn't be seeing a candidate tonight, so that's somewhat, should be somewhat assumed. But ultimately, the decision on whether to hire a particular candidate to be our next superintendent rests with this joint board. So it's the 33 people that were elected by individual towns or by all the towns, if you're on the cooperative board, that are empowered with making that decision on behalf of the community as representatives. So no decision has been made. It really has not been made before tonight. I don't know what will happen, any more than a member of the public knows. So, you know, we're going through this process to have an interview for some folks, for, I guess, for the eight members of the steering committee and for myself, who sat in on that, we've had an opportunity to hear some responses from the candidate. The other, you know, vast majority, the other 24 members of this board have not heard from the candidate directly. So this will be their opportunity to make their own assessment. So two-thirds of the people in this room that, that have a voice and a vote have not had an opportunity to really formally assess the candidate. So that is going to be happening tonight. It is a very meaningful part of the process, and we don't know what the outcome will be until we finish the interview and need to have a discussion about that. 7:12, so close. Yes, there's a public comment over here, so please come forward. And again, as I mentioned before, if you can please introduce yourself on what town you're from, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm nervous. I wasn't going to say anything. My name is Denise Short, and I'm, I live in Exeter. And I just wanted to talk about something that happened at the high school, apparently in the last couple weeks, that there were two incidents of swastikas being found in the school. And, and then right before this meeting, I saw that there was an announcement from the Exeter Police Department that there was another swastika found painted on the shed at the back of Swayze Parkway, and they think it had been there for a while. And I'm talking about it here because, as you consider hiring a new superintendent of schools, and we've already talked about DEIJ and how important that is, and I think this highlights even more how, at this particular time, that education and students and staff and everybody in this community feeling safe and included is incredibly important. And it's not just an abstract kind of thing. And, and in particular with the, what's going on nationally with, you know, it's in the news with a lot, with the rise, in particular, in antisemitism. And so I would urge you to make sure that whoever the candidate is, that they, that that's a really strong part of what they view is important for the school system to, to be focused on, that all students feel safe and included, and that this is not acceptable. It's not just, it's not just graffiti. It's not, it's, it's a hate crime. not, it's, it's a hate crime. And how we deal with that as a community is incredibly important. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Okay, so a few minutes before we, a minute or so before we close public comment. Is there anyone else from the board that would like to make any sort of observation or comment about sort of our continuing public comment? Want to make sure I provide room for that if anyone had something they wanted to share or say. Okay. Then I'm going to close the public input session. Thank you for people that came forward and shared their thoughts. I mean, I can speak for myself, but I think I can also somewhat speak on behalf of our extended board here and the joint boards, that we certainly value input from the public, and we appreciate those folks that take the time to come forward and share that with us. So thank you for being a part of the process by providing your thoughts and input. I'm going to move forward to the interview process. I'm going to turn things over to the chair of the steering committee, Allison Hagan.
I'm sorry, I was listening over here. What did you say? Sorry?
I'm just turning the process over to you.
Okay. So, is that, yes?
Yeah.
Two more. Oh, okay. You can ask them both.
Whatever you want to say.
I'm so glad.
And we covered the entire process that we've gone through and shared with them some of the feedback that we've gotten from the community. And we had 30 minutes of, of a lot of quiet public comment. And so now we, now we have you here. So, welcome. Thank you for joining us. And just sort of how this is going to work, we have nine questions tonight. So you are going to get one question from each district with a couple of exceptions. Co-op has two, and Kensington has two. And we will, our goal is to limit it to two to three follow-up sort of prompts per question. But, you know, you feel free to ask us questions or any, you know, any, whatever makes you comfortable. If you would like to start with any opening comments, we welcome that. And then Brentwood's actually going to kick it off.
All right. Great. Sure. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming too, over on the audience side. I appreciate your time, and obviously all of you. I think my only opening statement is, I just want to say that I have appreciated the opportunity to work in SAU 16 for as long as I have, and have nothing but gratitude for SAU 16 and the community and the people and our educators that work here. We've been working hard to grow and move our district and be the best it can possibly be for our students. So I just am gracious and grateful for that opportunity.
Good evening, Dr. Asbell. Thank you for coming tonight. I don't think Allison mentioned these questions are broken down sort of thematically, and our theme is, is leadership. And so the question we agreed upon as a board is, how would you, as a leader, gain the trust, support, and commitment of the staff and employees across not only the administrative unit, but across the SAU to help you achieve your vision and goals and the vision and goals set forth by the, the boards?
Great. I think trust is a, is a large word. It can mean many different things to many different people. For us, we've been recently doing some trust work because we recognize that that's an important piece of leadership. And so really, I think of trust as in four quadrants, one of them being care, which is probably the most important quadrant. So being able to hear other people's views and show people that you care about them starts to build trust. I think that's a critical component that as a leader, you have to have care and show that you care. Another component is you have to be sincere. When you say something, you have to be able to do that and follow through with that and be honest. Another area would be an area of competency. Do you have the knowledge, skills, and mindsets to actually do the job? And I believe I do. And so that's another area where I think you can gain trust is through competency. And the last area is reliability. Say, say what you mean and mean what you say. I think there's been, those of you that have worked with me know that that is one of my characteristics in building trust. So as a leader, I think about those four quadrants, those four areas of trust. And when we hear, we don't trust you, then to really break it down and help define so we can have a conversation and really finalize, what do I need to work on? What area? Is it reliability? Is it sincerity? Is it caring? Or is it competence? What area do I need to grow in to continue to build trust? And our team, playing to our team's strengths is also an area that builds trust, I think, in our educators as a whole organization. Some of you may remember that my dissertation, it feels like a long time ago, although it wasn't, really focused on appreciative inquiry and appreciative intelligence as aligned with transformational leadership. Through that, we've really learned as a senior leadership team and with our building-level leaders and now our educators, how important it is to emphasize, to build on people's strengths as a leader, to build capacity for leadership by doing that. The research is very clear that when you build on people's strengths, your organization is much stronger and much more productive. So that is definitely an angle of my leadership that has grown probably over the last three years, the most in that area.
And the one follow-up. All right. The one follow-up we had is, is there a leader that you've seen that in that you think you would like to emulate or is worth emulating?
I think, when I think about caring, a leader that I saw a high level of care in was our past superintendent, Michael Morgan. Some of you may have worked with him. He certainly had the ability to see other people's interests and see other people's point of view, and was probably one of the most sincere and reliable and competent superintendents that I ever had the opportunity to work with. So certainly, I would emulate some of those characteristics that he grew in me when we worked together.
Does anybody else have a follow-up?
Hi, Dr. Asbell.
Hi, Jen.
So part of this question talked about your vision and goals, and I'm not seeing that, correct me if it is actually reflected in the other questions. Can you speak a little bit to your vision and goals for our SAU?
Yeah, I think my vision and goals is, is that of our team that we've been working on, is really focused on creating a true competency-based education system for our students, in that we're meeting students where they're at, we're challenging them, we're rigorous academically. And that means different things and different levels for different students. I think that trying to have opportunities for our students and empowering them to have voice is a vision. I feel like at this point, we've started that journey, but we haven't really focused in, I think, had a lot of conversations with our students. And I think that's a critical component to empowering them. You're very familiar, I'm sure, with our vision, and to be collaborative and have those skills of problem-solving. How do, how do we get those skills so that our students are really clear about that they have them? I don't think we've had those conversations with our kids. And I think that's a first and critical component of that vision, enacting that vision for us. As well as, like I said, playing to our strengths would be a critical component because we all have a variety of strengths on our team and amongst our educators and our students also. So in order to enact that competency-based program, we really need to consider those things as well as equity. That is another area that I think is critical. We're beginning, again, we're in, I would say, infant stages with that work. We've engaged with some community organizations, which has been super helpful. And I would continue to do that as a goal. I think our access is, we're getting there. It's certainly, we don't have access for all of our students at, for everything. And again, we've got to go back to our students and say, what, what, how do we need to grow? How do we need to support you in providing you an equitable education? So those are some goals and overall vision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any follow-ups? All right.
All right. Moving on to question two, I guess.
Yes.
Thank you. Evening, Dr. Asbell. Good to see you.
Thanks.
So, question relative to communication. As the leader of the SAU, what would be your communication plan for teachers, administration, parents, and the community?
It's a big question, Travis.
Big question. You've got 90 minutes.
I mean, I had the opportunity to meet with focus groups with all the major stakeholders, and certainly communication came up, I would say, with every focus group as well as in the last round of interview questions. In my head, I've divided that communication into two separate pieces. One, community relations, and one being more that PR marketing type of communication. I think our community relations is a primary role of the SAU leadership. We've got to be visible. We have to be in our schools. We have to be in our community. We have to be talking with our students. So to support our educators in communicating, I think we have to be very clear about what our vision is and how we're going to move that forward with support and input from all of the stakeholders. I think that the marketing piece is probably, I hope, that the joint board decides to do that communication audit. I think that would be helpful information with a focus around how do we, how do we build public relations in, how frequent do you want? What kind of communication do you want? Where do you want it? Right? Those are things that people are trained in with, that have PR degrees. I don't. I have an educational leadership degree. So certainly, that, something like that audit would be critical for our team to move forward. But I think the community relations part, we're well-equipped to do. I think that we need to get out there. We need to go to the football games. We need to be at the places where we're approachable. I think that that is something that maybe we haven't done as often as we could have. And so it's about accessibility, right? Us being open and accessible at a variety of venues, not just at a formal meeting or at a set time. I think just being out there in the, like I said, on the football field, at the play, at the ice cream smorgasbord, at open houses, that's when people come up to you and say, hey, what about this? That starts to build that communication and also the trust. So those are some things around communication that I'm focused on.
Thank you. I think Heather has a.
Any follow-up?
I have one, one question. Thank you. So just building off of the community relations point that you made, I'm curious how you, as you go about that work, how you might, what your plan would be for really incorporating the viewpoints and perspectives of those historically marginalized in our community, people of color, people with disabilities, people with housing or income insecurities. What might be some of your steps to make sure that their voices are heard?
Right. We do have some strong community organizations that I think we need to meet with more regularly and get some information as well as education from some of those community organizations. I also think being out and visiting places where perhaps we don't often get to, for example, Riverwoods, and going into our neighborhoods. I know during the pandemic, one of the silver linings, if you will, was when we delivered food. We were in neighborhoods, we were in communities, and we got to see parents driving up or walking up, or how they needed different levels of support. So I think somehow continuing getting out of the communities is a critical component. It happened kind of by default when we were delivering food out into the community. But partnering with the fire stations and the police and things like that, they're out in the community. They have a good knowledge base for us to communicate around those issues that you bring up. So I think we have to build those community partnerships with a variety of folks, as well as be visible at all kinds of community events to make sure that we hear the voices that need to be heard and then support that.
Just to build on that communication question, you know, I know this came up often during COVID. And I'm just wondering if you think back to the kind of the communication that happened during COVID, what do you think the SAU did well, and what would you have improved?
Great. This is almost the same question that the student Carson asked me. I think what I would do differently, or what we would do differently for sure, is we would have that communications committee right away with the stakeholders, with parents, with board members. I think that that was very helpful once it was developed, but it was developed late. And so I think organizing people right away to get input from a variety of sources and concerns would be helpful. And then that committee really helped us in developing what the best way was to communicate and what needed to be communicated. So that kind of drove that communication pattern. My sense and feeling was after that committee came together and helped, we worked together to get information out, it did help create a sense of transparency and a better sense of communication. So that's a major thing I would do differently is pull people together right away. And I think one thing we did well was we, we did put out a lot of information, although sometimes I think the information was almost too lengthy. So that's another thing I would change, is it could be confusing when it's real long and you're trying to cover a lot of things. So maybe scaffolding it and breaking it out and down around certain topics, again, driven by that committee. What is needed? Do we need a separate parent? Do we need a separate community? Do we need a student communication system instead of just one kind of going out to everyone? So those are things we've thought about. Should we, knock on wood, hit another pandemic or another critical situation like that?
Thank you, Allison. Dr. Asbell, I was hoping you could speak a little bit more to communication specific to teachers and building administration. For instance, if there's a new initiative coming from the SAU office, the type of communication you would engage in to get buy-in from, from all the people that would be employing that initiative to make sure it could be successful?
Yeah, I think that a critical component of communication is that I hear from teachers and through our focus groups that people feel overwhelmed. There's too many things going on, too much on the plate, right? And so I think one way of communicating is right away, we're focused on competency-based education. Our focus right now is authentic assessment. So that's, that's what we're doing. Other things come into that, most certainly. Our DEIJ work can come into authentic assessment, right? Also, our SEL can come in. School safety and those can all come under authentic assessment. If kids don't feel safe, what is that, is that assessment equitable? Is it accessible? The focus has got to be almost linear, I think, to support our teachers so they don't feel so overwhelmed. Also, I think we have to provide professional development in a, in a broad-based plan, communicating out in the next year and three years, this is the SAU protective plan to support you professionally, professional development-wise. I think that we all kind of know what the plan is, but we don't always share it. I think we have to be much more cognizant of laying that out and talking that through and seeing if it is meeting the needs of our teachers and our educators. Oftentimes, at the building level, I think another idea might come up that they want professional development on building bridges, right? Something completely different. So also talking with our building-level administrators, saying, okay, this is, this is our major focus. Let's think before you add anything else to that, how can we pull it into that major focus, what you, what your concern is? So if it's how to do interventions, right, and how to use progress and data and progress monitor students, how are we going to use authentic assessment to do that? And then that still becomes the feeling of the professional development we're providing is aligned with the buildings. I think sometimes we have offshoots of things, and then teachers can get overwhelmed. There's an SAU kind of path, and then sometimes there's a building path, and they don't always align. So talking with building administrators and figuring out, how do we align that? And then working with teachers to show, this is, this is the plan. This is the big picture. What do you need to get there?
I'm just going to add, last week, you made a comment to a similar-type question that I'd love for you to share. You made the comment, common but flexible? You made the comment, common but flexible.
Right.
Can you share what, what that looks like to you?
Sure. Oftentimes, when we put it, push an initiative out, we say, common but flexible. So for example, using authentic assessment, buildings are in different places and staff are in different places. So even though the initiative is authentic assessment, in one building, it might be developing authentic assessment, in another, it might be they're calibrating it because they already had authentic assessments. So the common is, we're all working on authentic assessments. The flexible is, where is your building at and what needs do you have to support your teachers to move that initiative further?
Thank you. Okay. Any, so next up, we have new fields.
Hi, Dr. Azbell. So we have academic rigor as our topic, and I have a two-part question. First, can you give us your definition of academic rigor?
Sure. My definition of academic rigor is meeting students where they're at so they feel challenged when they go into learning, however, not so challenged that their brain freezes flights or they, they freeze flight or can't manage it. So I think academic rigor is, is a broad definition because it is pretty individual for each student. We're in different places. And so something that I might find challenging, someone else might not. I think we have to learn to really differentiate and use our data to be able to do that for our students so that it is rigorous. It is, when kids are entering into learning, it is a challenge for them, but not so challenging that they shut down.
Okay, on that, when you, you mentioned the data. What is your, when you think about academic rigor, how will we know if it's, what we're implementing is successful?
Right, I think that we do a lot of progress monitoring with our students. We have some nationally standardized, different kinds of assessments we're using, whether it's in literacy or in math. Recently, we have shown growth, good growth, across all of our schools in math, which we all know was an area of concern for us. So we're seeing some growth there. We will see, we won't see growth if we're over-challenging our students or if we're under-challenging. So we want to see at least a year's growth with many of our students. And then some may have a little more and some may be a little less. It's those ones that are a little less, are we meeting their needs? The ones that are, need a little more, are we meeting their needs? So we're, we're looking at how are we measuring growth? And then we have our, you know, we have our SAS, we have a state assessment. Fortunately, we, we also grew there. We show more students proficient in the areas of math, high, very high above the state average. The state average was 38% proficient, and we were 50s and higher, some 60s in math, which was also an increase from the year before. So that is showing that what our educators are doing and how they're growing our students and how our students are accessing that education, they are able to become more proficient, and a larger portion of them are becoming more proficient, and that's what we're looking for. We would love 100% to be proficient, and that's what we shoot for. So in order to be rigorous, we do have to be able to differentiate, though, because that's why we're measuring growth, not just a final cut score, because we all start in different places and we all want to grow at least a year, if not more.
Any follow-ups? Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a follow-up. When you're thinking about issues of academic rigor, I heard you mention state standards as one comparison. How do discussions about rankings and comparison, more direct comparisons with other schools fit into that assessment of how rigorous of a SAU and school district we have?
It's, it's really challenging to use our, the rankings because there's so many variety of factors that go into every ranking. So whether it's the US News or whether it's School Digger or whatever ranking it is, it's very different data that goes into how they rank. Some of it is what students and parents type in. Others consider how many AP classes your high school is offering. Others consider how many AP, students are taking the AP classes. So it's such a variety, it's hard to use those rankings to really disaggregate data to help us. Again, comparing against other schools is also difficult because we're about equity. It's not about equal. Anika would be using the same cut score for everyone, and as you know, your communities are very different. And so we're looking for that growth. We're looking for that academic growth so we can meet the needs of students, and we know that we're doing that if we're showing a higher percentage of students meeting their growth targets. But certainly comparing one school to another where resources are very different, accessibility is different, and it would be inequitable in my point of view.
All right. Moving on here, I believe Exeter is up.
Yeah, thank you. So I get to ask you a question about diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. And earlier in the interview, you mentioned we as SAU 16 are at the beginning of this work. And so my question for you is, what are key opportunities for growth in SAU 16's DEIJ efforts? And how will you, as a leader and in this role, contribute in a meaningful way? And I wonder if you might give us a few specific examples?
Sure. I, I think I am at the stage in learning where it's really important for me to learn about myself, my, my own bias. I am a white female, and that brings with it bias and experiences. I grew up on a horse farm. That brings up a perspective that other people may not share or have. So I think the first step is all of our educators and our students understanding that it's really important to enter into a conversation, recognizing and knowing yourself really well and entering into conversations with an open heart. Even though you may not be in agreement, we have to really be aware that we all come from different places and we all have different stories. So I think that's kind of where we're at right now with our education, working through what, what is an implicit bias? How does that happen in a conversation? What is it to be culturally competent? What does that mean? What does that look like? So those conversations are happening with our staff and with our leaders, and we're all learning. I think my role in that is to continue that learning and make that a priority. In order to be equitable, we really have to look at the pedagogy, the structures, and our culture. So in a broader sense, what are our structures doing to support equity and inclusion? What structures aren't? Is our pedagogy, our curriculum, the way we're teaching, is that also inclusive and accessible for all of our students? And then when we talk about our culture, right? Our culture right now, we're, we're a pretty traditional system, right? This system was created in, I think, 1848, the first Exeter school. It was, it was a white male perspective. That is still strong. Our system still has that, that depth and that foundation. And there's some value in that. We need to recognize that story also. But we also have to recognize, in order to be, have, be equity-driven, how does those stories change? What is it about the organization and our system? We're a white system. That is not equitable for everyone. So recognizing those three major factors, the pedagogy, the culture, and our structures is a way to start to break down, what do we need to look at? What do we need to change? Policies is another example of structure, and we've, you know, we started, we just looked at policies at Exeter and let's use gender-neutral language. So that's an example of a, more of a structure. I think culture is really about learning about ourselves right now, like I mentioned. And then when, when we think about pedagogy, it's looking at our curriculum. It's looking at those authentic assessments. Are they accessible by our students? Are we using something that other students may not even know what it is? For example, I remember on the standardized test, it's, it's, we might talk about baling hay, someone that has no, no idea what even a bale of hay is. It's not, it's not an authentic question for that student or for that culture. So we need to look at our curriculum and how we're approaching our pedagogy to make sure that we are equitable.
Thanks, and I have one follow-up question. So you mentioned you're building your own awareness and, and learning. How has your increased awareness around DEIJ changed the way that you look to support your staff, your senior leadership team, families, and students? And I wonder if you could give us an example?
Yeah, I think for me right now, it's about creating safe spaces to have really challenging, hard conversations. It's, it can be hard to open a, to enter into a conversation with an open heart if you're feeling judged, if you're not kind of having those cultural competencies and those norms that support the creation of safe spaces. We just, with senior leadership team this past Wednesday, redid our norms to create a safe space for us because we weren't all feeling safe. So what is that? That was a hard conversation. We needed to talk through that. We needed to look at our norms. We needed to readjust things. We need to do that with our leaders, with our building leaders. And we model that, and then we do that with K through 12, and then the goal is, then that goes into schools, and they're having those conversations in PLCs and with staff meetings and things like that. It's not grown that far, that fast yet, but that's the ultimate vision, is to be able to do that in order to look at the whole organization and the system.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up, if I may. As you say, we are still, I mean, this, this, where we live and, and all of these structures here, we are a very, very majority-white community. So how are you going to bring in those other perspectives? Like how, what is your plan for knowing how to proceed with what we don't know, we don't know?
Yeah, I think we, I am depending a lot on our organizations within our community, as well as like UNH New Hampshire. Listen, there are some strong communities, organizations that have, can help us do that, as well as Concord just also approved their DEIJ coordinator. So now there are four in the state of New Hampshire. I think having some conversations with all four. I know our organization, the New Hampshire School Administrators, is an organization is also providing a panel with all four of those folks. So going to those professional development opportunities when they arise, I think, is another critical component of learning. Certainly, it's an, it's a long process. It's ongoing, and I'm speaking for me.
Anybody else have questions? Go ahead.
Sorry. We talk, when we're talking about DEIJ, it's, there's a lot of discussion about race in, but where do you see the equity in students of, of special needs in our schools? And how do you expect, how do you plan to make sure that they're included?
Right, I think some of, some of the steps that I know Renee, who was our director of special ed, and Ellen have worked really hard on with our building levels, is really coming up with truly individualized teams for our students. I'm not, they, well, they all have an individual education plan, but then how does that plan get implemented? Oftentimes, it's behaviors, right? And so trying to come up with team response and consider trauma and those kinds of pieces of information that we hadn't in the past. So that's one way of keeping them included in the classroom, getting them into the mainstream classroom as much as possible, those kinds of things to include and have access. We've done a better job of recognizing that we, we don't always have access for our students with special needs. And so what does that look like? How do we change that? And I always defer to Renee, who I think she's here, yep, who has an amazing background in inclusion and trauma and did her dissertation around those things. So we're very fortunate to have that resource in our SAU, and we usually talk it through and start there. It certainly is something that is in the forefront of our minds. It's a critical component because we do have a large population in all of our buildings that have students on IEPs. So how do we ensure that they have access and feel included and part of that community? And when they don't, again, I think we have to go back and listen to our students, right? It isn't just observing, which is a critical component, but also talking with students. What can we do to make you feel included? Do you feel included, right? Have those conversations. I'm not sure we've done a great job of having those conversations with, in particular, this population you've identified.
Yes, all right.
Sorry, do you mind if I ask a follow-up? Just, Dr. Azbell, I want to give you an opportunity sort of to respond if, if I was a critic that was here and said that you have a lot of strengths, but you're not a statewide leader in the area of DEIJ. It's not something that, you know, you haven't been recognized by the, the state. You don't come in with accolades for that. Are you ready to be a superintendent and take leadership in that area without having been that, that leader with, across the state? How would you respond to that criticism?
Right, I think that, again, I have to depend on, on educating myself and continue to grow in that area. I certainly am confident that that's an area I want to promote and talk with and work through. But certainly, I would have to depend on our community resources, our internal resources, and our state-level resources to become better at that.
And if, if I may, how, how will you actually draw in the perspectives of the, the people who live in this area, who, who aren't people who are there to provide resources, they're people who are living here? How are you going to, how are you going to reach out in, in that way?
I know in Exeter Elementary, we've started some, you know, affinity spaces for community members. I think joining that and asking if I could be, listen and be part of those affinity spaces. I know there's one for leadership, but there's also some for different parents that need different, that have different affinity groups. So I think listening and asking if I could be part of that is a critical way to get involved and hear at, for that community, at the community level from the parents. I think also, again, being out at organization, at our activities, whether it's, again, on, on the field or at open house, that's when you have, you are accessible, and it doesn't seem as formal, I think, for some folks. And so when you're approachable and accessible, that's when you can hear those conversations and what's on people's minds. And so I think that's another way that I would learn and grow, is to be out there and be accessible and hear that, and maybe not always have, at this point, the perfect response, but be able to say, I hear you. What, how can we work together? Help me understand. I want to learn with you. I want to support you. What does that look like for you?
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Dr. Azbell. So something we've heard as super-important, of course, academic rigor is always top of mind, but what we've heard especially in the last couple of years is mental health. And so what will your role be as a leader in this district to help support, you know, the mental health of students and our staff and, and families in general?
Yeah, this is one area that I am very confident in. My background is in school counseling and continue to be educated and stay current in this area, dependent quite a bit on Dr. Macy, which is the International Trauma Center out of Cambridge, Massachusetts. He has become a colleague and a great resource for us to work through. For example, some of you maybe had middle school students. We have what was called the HSA, which was through Cambridge, not through the International Trauma Center, but Dr. Macy helped us find that resource to really find out where our middle school students were at. It wasn't opt-in because it was a mental health SEL-type survey, but we did get over that 60% return, which was what we need for it to be valid. So continuing to push that, continuing to push that screening, that universal screening, which our elementary schools use the DESA, and what's the follow-up for that? And then for our Tier Two and Tier Three supports, how do we continue to ensure that we have that for our students? We do a good job, I think, at Tier Two and Tier Three. We also have a Tier Four level, which is our Behavior Interventions Team, which is regional for our elementary schools, and there are two teams for our six through 12. I actually brought that to SAU 16, as well as to the state. And we're going out to the national conference next week and presenting there. Mental health is critical to our system because if our students aren't mentally healthy and our faculty aren't mentally healthy, we can't access the learning and, and the instruction. I think another thing we've done, a lot of work around for our educators coming out of the pandemic, is really compassion care or self-care. You may be more familiar with that. We created what's called tripods, and again, I want to thank Dr. Bennett for bringing tripods to SAU 16. We started them at Exeter, and then we have grown that. Our administrators have two other people that are check-ins. We do, it's, you can, it's called pies, so you kind of check, do that quick chicken, where how are you physically, how are you emotionally? And you go through that. It's just a nice way to kind of, where are you at? Where are we at before we start this work or this meeting? It also gives you two people that you can count on outside of meetings, right? So sometimes we recognize, we might see someone, I'll see someone in my tripod that looks like, it's been a tough day. I might just send him a text, looks like he's hanging in. What, what are you going to do for self-care tonight? And we've built that with our educators and our, some of our support staff, really focused on those high burnout areas right now with our mental health providers, right? So that's what we've focused on right now, is trying to make sure they all have tripods. So it's, it's, works really well, and it also creates a self-care plan that they're familiar with, and you can do things that are individual to you. So someone might go out and want to breathe fresh air for a few minutes, and someone else might want to listen to their favorite song. So they help work through, how do I regain and how do I kind of recalibrate myself? And also, when it is more extreme, you know, we, we have those supports for our students. We also have those supports for our staff. And I commend Heather in the back there. I have sat in on some of those hard conversations where our staff has not been in a place where they they could teach. So we need to support that. We need to say this, you know, this is our plan. This is how we'll support you. What else do you need? So we are very aware of the mental health needs and as they continue to grow, because they are, I would hope that at a state level, we're working to, our resources in the state are weak. You know, if any of you have tried to find a counselor for yourself or for a student or for a friend, it's very difficult right now. And so I have been conversations at the state level with DHS and human, that area, trying to figure out, I know they've created the Mobile Crisis Unit. However, response time is long. And then if the student or a person is in crisis, what's the follow-up? Because our schools, we're not meant to be mental health counselors or therapists. We're meant to kind of triage and then connect and have, get the right support for folks. And in this state, it's hard. That's, that's a, that's a missing link sometimes. So we do struggle with that for sure. You're welcome.
That leads very nicely into our next question.
I don't think we need, I think it would be repetitive.
So our, our next question was about SEL and student culture. You, I think you should ask it. It could have a different answer.
I'll come up with something.
Hi, Dr. Esbel. It's no wonder I got this question. What do you see as your number one priority for social, emotional learning in the district? And how do you anticipate that impacting student culture and overall health?
Sure, I think right now my number one priority after what we just talked about would be, how do we really have SEL not be a standalone, right? How is it in that Tier One instruction on a daily basis? How do we support our teachers to recognize that that's an important component and it happens as things, it's what we do here, right? So when you're starting your day, do you have a morning meeting? Does everybody have some kind of, whether it's advisory or whether it's restorative justice or whatever the school, again, that common but flexible, right? What fits for your school, but how do we push that into Tier One and it becomes part of the culture then that we care about you and we care about where you're at? And that's important for us to know in order for you to enter into your learning.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Esther.
Hi.
I was going to ask what metrics, if there are any, that you feel are important when it comes to behavioral issues are important to track? And how do you gauge success as we work with our students around behavioral issues?
Yeah, I mean, we, we track our behavior through discipline, you know, our assistant principals and/or our principals. Sometimes it's our administrative assistants doing it off of paper, trails, et cetera. So where that dashboard that you have seen certainly has a discipline component and we track that. We hope for the data for in-school suspensions, out-school suspensions, truancies to decrease. That's how we, that's what we shoot for. And I think that as far as mental health, that's harder to track. We, we are trying to come up with a system to identify when it's a mental health issue, but still keep the confidence of the student for anyone that might see that. And so we'll, we're tracking that and trying to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the metric, the importance of having that information, right? But also not ensuring that the student's confidentiality is kept. So that's something that we're talking through with our administrators, particularly our elementary administrators. You know, they're dealing with discipline issues in a different way that's age appropriate than the high school. The high school has a, you know, a major minor like the middle school, so it's pretty easy for those metrics to go in, so to speak. Elementary schools sometimes struggle with that because it is age appropriate sometimes for kids to do things that you, you read and see, and I'm sure you've experienced in your own families, you know, take, take lying, right? We call it lying at the high school, right? You knew a first grader, maybe I might want to put they're lying because that's age appropriate. They're trying to push the boundaries and see what they can do and what that looks like, right? So we're working through that with our administrators right now around the elementary metrics. But certainly we hope that that's balanced scorecard. I know the middle and high school are doing an excellent job of putting in the metrics this time with some, with a lot of consistency. So we'll be able to see those metrics halfway in at the middle through the year and then start to develop plans on how do we decrease the things that aren't good for our kids, such as out-of-school suspension.
You had, you had mentioned specific, your number one priority, making it so that SEL is not standalone, that you're integrating into the culture. How will you know that you're doing that? How are you going to measure that?
When, when we stop hearing, what are we doing for SEL?
Okay.
Right? When, when, when it becomes, this is important, I need to do a check-in. You look like you're not doing well. I need to check in. That just becomes the norm. It's part of our culture. We still hear, what are we doing for SEL instead of what are we doing for our students? Because that is part of our academic, right? It really is for, in order for our students to access their education, they have to be in a place physically and mentally, socially and emotionally that they're ready to learn, pre-K through 12. So our Tier One, it just becomes what, what we do. We check in with kids every class. I kind of scan my class in the morning. Our administrators are out greeting buses, kind of scanning, right? I always, when I was a principal, found that super helpful. You see someone walking in, whether it was a faculty member or a student and be like, mm, hey, walk with me for a second. Everything okay? You know, that, that's when it becomes part of the culture, when everybody calls everybody by their first names, students and staff, when you know when you walk around a building and it's 1,600 students, but yet our administrators and our teachers and each other, we're recognizing students, we're recognizing that, oh, you play hockey too? Or, oh, you know what? I know that you rode horses this weekend. Now you remember that conversation from advisory and I'm going to check in on that. How did that go this weekend? So building those authentic relationships really promotes that SEL to become part of the culture.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think we are back to the co-op.
Excellent, we are. Thank you. Hi. So thinking about teachers and support staff, how do you envision that you can support them so that they do their best and feel their best every day?
Every day, Bill. That's a tough one.
Yes.
I, I think I've answered, you know, some, some ideas I have is, is obviously talking with them, really narrowing that focus around initiatives and making sure that we're communicating clearly what that plan is and what that looks like around competence-based education. I think providing a variety of common and flexible for everyone. So, you know, we have staff in the same building that are in different places around CBE or competence-based education. We also have them in different places around DEIJ. We have different, so how do we differentiate, which is what we are asking our educators to do? How do we do that for educators, right? Some of that is, we do with the March 8th Day is having colleagues present to colleagues and then they've kind of say, oh, you're a good resource for that. I need some support in that. Again, that focus of that appreciative lens, building on people's strengths, I think can feel very supportive. I think also the way we approach when educators, when they're struggling is critical and we have to, I believe we have to come from that appreciative lens. So instead of, I guess the easy example is when you're with a student and they've worked really hard and they've done three of the 10 problems you requested. You can go up to that student and go, oh, I see you've done three of that 10 problems, but let's focus on the ones you haven't done yet. What happens to the kid's brain? They start to shut down because I did three, like, right? The converse, the question might be instead, let's talk about the three that you were successful with. Get through that and then go, can you, now, now how can you make it four? Right? We're still, we're still looking at work in completion. That's still the objective, just but how you approach people and the questions you ask a struggling educator that might have classroom management instead of saying, I observed this and, you know, I really liked the way the posters were on your wall, but your classroom management, the minute I say but, that educator, again, isn't really hearing me and gaining anything from that conversation. That was part of flipping and the purpose of flipping that portrait of an educator, our evaluation system, so that we can ask questions like, okay, we were in your class. How do you think, how do you think that, that observation went? And then the next follow-up might be, on your best day, what would classroom management look like? Did it match that day? Because most educators know what strong classroom management looks like. And then that conversation is, now I'm like keeping that brain creative. So I think that can feel supportive for educators when you take, come in from that lens. I know the feedback on our POE has felt more like coaching sessions with administrators and not about where to improve or what you did wrong, but where is your strength? How can we grow that? And, and what are you going to do to show that you've grown? And those conversations are going well by all accounts. You're welcome.
Other questions? I have a follow-up question for that then. How will you, like, if you have initiative that you want to implement in a school or in schools, how will you build collaboration with the educators to sort of like build buy-in?
Yeah, I, I think one is always talk about what's the rationale for this idea? What is the, is it, does the research support it? Is it really student-centered? Is it about helping you as an educator to do a job that's better for our students? I think those conversations have to happen upfront before you say, oh, we're going to put in a new math program, right? It's got to be about, okay, let's look at the data. Let's look at the metrics. Why are we looking at math programs? What is it here? We know our data wasn't strong. And so we had those conversations. It is difficult in SAU 16 because we're so large to have that conversation with everyone. Oftentimes it's representatives from buildings. So I think we also have to be really clear of, when you're a representative, this, this is what we need you to communicate back. We need you to gather feedback on this area. We need you to provide the rationale. Are you comfortable doing that? If not, I'll go with you, right, to do that. I think sometimes it gets lost in translation and then people, the frustration gets high because they don't always understand the rationale for, in your words, a new initiative.
Great, thank you. Stratum.
Thank you for being here. We have transparency. So two-part question. What does transparency mean to you? In looking at your whole career, can you tell us about a time that maybe you could have been more transparent with the community and what did you learn from that experience?
Okay. Transparency to me means integrity and honesty, being really clear and doing what you say and saying what you mean. I think that as I, when I was a principal, we, I lived in, I worked in Northwood, which has a town budget system similar to Stratum, but we also had a budget, a municipal budget advisory. And so the budget advisory does have a different kind of power than our financial advisory committee does in Stratum. They, they actually, you present the budget and then the budget advisory also has the power to change the numbers, et cetera. And so my first year as principal, that was new to me, a new process. And we did a good job of kind of organizing it and laying it out, but I realized at the budget advisory meeting that I should have been much more transparent as to what we, what the changes we were making because we had two bus routes. Some elementary students, it was a K-8 school, their day was about nine and a half hours long from the beginning because they would have to wait for a second round of buses at the end of the day. And so we were putting in a whole new fleet of buses. It was a private company and that was very costly. So the increase to the budget was well over a million dollars for this second bus route. And the budget advisory committee, I should have done a better job, been more transparent about the rationale for that. It ended up passing, but it would have gone much smoother had I been transparent, honest. And it wasn't, it wasn't not being honest, it was not understanding that I needed to have those conversations and the rationale first to be transparent so that when they saw that, it wasn't almost like, what's going on? So the next year, that's what we did. I learned that you take the, the budget chairman out to dinner and you go through the budget and then answer questions so that they feel prepared because no one likes to be in a meeting and be leading a conversation and not feel prepared. So that's where I think transparency and honesty and integrity, you, you learn and you move forward. But certainly that was the thing that I could have been more transparent and done a better job.
Any follow-ups for transparency? All right, moving back to Kensington.
Hi. So this question has two parts. They are similar, but it's about, about technology in the classrooms. So what are your thoughts on technology in the classrooms for educational or learning purposes across all age groups? And then similarly, what's your, what are your thoughts on technology for personal use or access to personal use technology in the classrooms?
So the first question, obviously I oversee tech in SAU 16, which translates to Richard Pratt oversees tech. And we both believe in, in one-to-one and that has happened over time and thank the community and the boards for supporting that. So I believe in order to be, have some 21st century skills, a part of that is being technologically savvy and understanding how to use and access information that you find, how to even scan through it, what's reliable, what's authentic, what's real, what's not real, those kinds of things. I think if we don't practice that with our kids, then we're sending, we're doing a disservice. We're not giving them one of the 21st century skills that they are going to need. I think there also has to be a balance in the classroom, right? It can't be all computer-driven. I think sometimes when we're trying to get at metrics, we oftentimes can rely too heavily on that. I know we just had a presentation at the Stratum Board and they do one-on-one math interviews. So that's one way to gather that information, which I think is really helpful. They also use iReady, you know, don't, don't be, I don't want to be misunderstood. However, that gives you one that's computer-based, again, access and equity for our kids, right? Maybe in that conversation, you're understanding that the skill level is different than what came across just in a computer-based assessment. So I think the computer piece in the classroom is necessary. I think we have to be very cognizant of what we use that for and how we're, having our kids understand the importance of it and how to use it is critical. I also think that we have to be very, very aware that it's age-appropriate, the amount of time. I also think we have Seesaw and Canvas. K-8 is the Seesaw and at the high school is Canvas. Those are really useful tools, particularly at our high school. Kids can go in, they can check, they can look at assignments. That's very efficient. They can get real-time feedback. That's super helpful to use technology in the classroom that way. And in our K-8, it's super helpful to communicate with our parents. I think the pandemic flipped the use and purpose of those two tools for us and we're trying to pull it back in, meaning that we used it so much all the time and that's not the purpose. That's not, we had purchased Canvas and Seesaw before the pandemic to really have students in K-8 build their portfolio, put in very specific highlighted activities. So at the end of kindergarten or at a student-led conference, you have access to, this is what I've done, this is what I know, this is how I'm demonstrating my learning, not every single thing, not every day, right? So trying to figure out what is, what is an authentic valuable portfolio entry for our K through eighth graders is kind of where we're back at. We were right there on the cusp. So that's another use that I would support is building that portfolio because everybody then can see, I just imagine when we get to gateway defenses at the end of eighth grade and they look back at kindergarten and their writing and the development of their writing, I just think that's an amazing thing for a student to see and for a parent to see that development and that demonstration of, of growth. As far as your second priority question is personal use, I think that can be difficult. That's why we, we are giving access one-to-one for our students. It becomes inequitable because some students have access to phones and laptops, other students don't. And so the minute we open that up and say, you can use that in school, we create a system of inequity. So I think it's our responsibility to provide the tool for educational purposes and not depend on personal use devices for the educational process.
What about the not educational process? What about just kids and their cell phones?
Yeah, I think that's, again, a tough one. We would love to have that at the high school. I know that I just came up in this, I asked this question at the Student Focus Group. They said, do you have any questions? I go, this could be a can of worms, but how do you feel about that? I think communicating the rationale of why it isn't, meaning that, and this is what I said in the focus group is during March Madness, so many students were streaming, it shut down, it overloaded and our elementary students were not able to access the state testing. That was a problem. And even the kids in the room, once they heard that, they were like, oh, oh, I can see how that could be a problem. And so we, you know, we are trying to get, once again, phones to work because there's the safety component piece, right? Phones, not the wifi, but just a phone call, a text. So we're having another, we're working with another engineer to come in again and look at Exeter High School in particular because it's, it's like the vault in that building. My phone doesn't work, no one's does. There's a couple of places you can go. Apparently the kids told me that you can go over here and that's where we go to text. So for those purposes, I think it has value and we recognize that, particularly if there was a critical incident, right? That would be very reassuring as a parent and a family member or a guardian to get that text and say, I'm okay. You know, I'm at Esther Esbel's house when you're trying to figure out what happened and what's going on in the chaos. Let's hope that never happens, but certainly that is a personal device use that I would love to be able for all of our kids to have. And right now that's not possible, particularly at the high school.
Would, can I ask? Jenny, then go back. Tell. Okay. So, you mentioned something about Stratum using both iReady and like one-on-one assessments. As the leader of the SAU, what do you see your role being to bring our, our schools together in equity as far as the way we're doing things? Process, assessment, curriculums? Because as of right now, they all look very different. So, what's your take on that?
I think, again, we're back to common flexible because we have different resources and different staff and different levels of expertise, et cetera. So, the, the common is everyone's doing iReady. It's the same math program. They're getting the same training. You know, all of the elementary schools use the same trainer and so, they send representatives from different grade levels across K-5, all of the districts. So, that's the common part. The flexible part is how you use that as an educator in your classroom. And I would support the continuing of that. We have got to allow our educators to be in their, in their, what, in their hearts, how they wanna instruct that. So, our ICANS are common, our competencies are common, our math program is common, certain assessments are common, but then there's the flexibility. Not everyone can afford the resources of a, an additional professional development experience. Right? So, we're trying to do things to bring that cost down for our smaller schools because they have a smaller number of students and our larger schools, like an Exeter Elementary, pays a larger portion of that professional development. So, it allows all of our elementary students to have access to this great professional development opportunity and this great consultant, but it isn't the same cost for everyone. So, kinda pooling those resources, I think, is one way to do it. Certainly, we, we work hard to keep it equitable, but we, I do believe that we still have to stick with that common but flexible because our schools, our districts are very different. Our parents are different, our communities are different. So, how can we ensure there's enough common so that when they enter at the co-op at sixth grade, they have some foundational skills for those teachers to look at and work through so that they can continue to move those kids at, from where they're from?
As a leader of the district, I know there are some districts in the area that are looking or have already moved towards no personal use in the classroom. Would that ever be something you would consider? Is that something you've thought about?
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that decision. I think I would go back to our kids and back to our teachers and back to, like, we have to have those conversations. I don't know always what kids are doing with their personal devices. You know, what are, I know safety is one concern. I know that communication piece is one concern. I think it starts with having those conversations around, what is the purpose? And is, is it serving that purpose? Or are you streaming March Madness games? Have to start talking to our kids.
Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, Doug Asbell. I'd like to hear a little bit about the non-traditional student, the student that chooses, that have, where we are right now, you know, technology education. The student that drops out of school, comes back three years later and enrolls in adult education. I'd like to hear your thoughts on how you, as superintendent, can support those, those students.
Yeah, I think, I was just having a conversation today with Principal Monahan about how do we incorporate freshmen to be like a feeder program for SST so more kids will experience that because there are valuable experiences here for sure. And the students that are in these programs, when you talk to them, they're getting so much and they're gaining so many skills and they're going out into the workforce, but certainly a leg up. I have a student that I work with in our, what we call Renew, and they were part of the culinary program. And then they went out into the summer job and they actually got $2 more an hour than anyone else because they had been part of the culinary program. So, just those kinds of things and those stories, we have to share so our, particularly our parents understand that a non-traditional, to use your word, Bob, approach to learning is critical, I think, again, to our 21st century skills. Right? What a, there isn't a better place to learn how to problem-solve than in some of these programs that we have at SST here. Michelle Voto, our Director of Adult Ed, has really increased that partnership with the high school in grabbing kids so we don't have that three-year gap. Right? And so, that's become a critical component of, she attends all of our leadership meetings. She gets all of our training. She's part of our SAU, which in the past, Leslie, our past director, wasn't always as involved at that level. So, pulling Michelle in, also using some of our school counselors and teachers are also working at adult ed at night. They chose to do that, some of those folks. And so, there's a nice connect for our students, too, that they may be a couple of periods a day over here and then they're doing this and they see a common face. And that's been helpful is kind of recruiting from our high school and middle school for courses at adult ed so kids feel more comfortable to access that option. And I think meeting with parents with, that, sometimes in high school, from a school counselor perspective, parents and guardians are tired when their kids, when school's been hard. Right? Getting your child to get up and come to school when that's not something they wanna do in year and year twelve, they're tired. So, sitting with those parents and really saying, there are a variety of options we have for you. What kind of day can we build to engage your student? It might be a piece here at SST combined with adult ed at night because we know you work and you can work during the day and you're gonna work the two to five shift. And so, let's, how can we, can you come to SST? So, I think it's being super flexible to meet the needs of our kids and building those not about brick and mortar. Right? It's about what other experiences can we provide for our students so they have an awareness of what else is out there, aside from our very traditional seven-period day at Exeter High School in this case. Yep.
Eric.
Sir, I was just gonna ask, how do you, how do you think about the role of parents in the success of their children's education? And if you consider it to be impactful, what, what would you do to encourage and nurture those positive things that parents can do to make their children successful?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the home plays a critical component in a student's success. So, how do we engage that? I think part of it we've talked about tonight is being more accessible, being available at places where it isn't formal and hearing, okay, how do, what's happening at home? How can we support you? And how can you support us? Right? To your point, like, what do you have? When I think about our ELO program at the high school, which is extended learning opportunities, I don't know that we've tried to engage parents and their expertise. We have a lot of parents that have a ton of expertise and caregivers and homes and grandparents and all different, that might be more than willing to do an ELO with a kid or even an internship. Right? Which is a little less rigorous, if you will, because you don't, you can do, you don't have to have a master teacher. The internship site can kinda control that. And so, we don't have an internship program and it kinda also answers your question, Bob, is another way to engage kids. That, what resources do our, our community members have, our parents, our families have that could help us create those systems? Right? I, I don't think we've tapped into that and that might be a way to start those initial is through a more formalized idea. And then, who's interested in helping us grow this idea? And are you interested in offering an internship at your place of business or something like that? I think is a way to start to get that ball rolling, to recognize that parents have a lot to offer us, just as we do families and homes.
So, I am, we sort of jumped the gun a little bit on that question, too, but I'm gonna let East Kingston wrap it up with our last formal question here on community building.
All right, so, community building. I'll try not to cough through all of this, sorry. Two parts here. So, this, we're talking here more community members, so those members that don't have any direct connection to the schools, as well as parents. And how do you plan on, for those groups, engaging them, uniting them when possible and involving them in, so that they feel, you know, included and are more aware of what's going on within the SAU?
So, for the community members that aren't part of our everyday sending kids to our schools and being engaged that way, take a page out of Superintendent Morgan's book was he, he was involved with a lot of the businesses, the Rotary, the Lions Club. He would go to Riverwoods. He was really engaged with that. He would go eat at Trackside once a week, you know, where people that maybe didn't have kids in our school frequented and he, that's how he made connections. That's how he built relationships. I think that's the foundation to engaging the community is you've got to build those relationships. And some of them can happen in a group format, but some happen individually, too, just going and frequenting businesses here and making that connection and let people know, this is my role. This is our, these are our leaders. How, how do we support you to support us? Kind of to Eric's point, a lot of our parents are in that community, too. So, getting to engage our parents. I think it's an untapped resource for us. And how do we tap that resource starts with, what do you have ideas as parents? Like, what, what do you wanna do with us? And then tapping our community and asking the same question internally with our teachers and our building-level leaders and our SLT. How do we engage community members that don't, that pay taxes and support us but don't have kids here, as well as how do we engage their parent? The internship idea is one small idea. You know, as we know, once we get larger conversations going, we often get amazing ideas. And then, how do we structure that and who moves that forward? And what does that look like? I also think that just being available, like putting out, you know, any parent, on every, the first Tuesday of every month, I'm gonna, you know, be available and then the next Tuesday, it's at night and switching that up, just for informal conversations and input, I think, is another way to engage particularly parents. Because often, they're working and they don't want to come to a board meeting. That's not what they're, you know, that's not what they want to do, but they do wanna have an opportunity to speak with senior leadership. And so, providing those opportunities more regularly and really getting that message out there. And that also is sometimes a struggle. Right? Particularly to people that aren't members of the school community. How do we get that out there? So, I'm gonna have to engage with Bob because he represents, as he's noted, that community. And what are your ideas, Bob? Where, you know, how do I do that? So, that's a place to start.
Any follow-ups? Go ahead.
I'm curious if you can share an example, maybe in the last two and a half years, which have been, you know, there have been a lot of groups in our community that have had a lot of different points of view on decisions made at the SAU 16. And I wonder if you could share an example of when you have really listened to a point of view that may have been different than your own or where the SAU 16 was making a decision where you were really able to take that in and maybe make a different decision or adapt a decision that you were making?
So, I'm trying to figure out how to describe the first thing that came to my mind and so I'll be kind of nebulous in my description, but at a large meeting with a lot of parent and community input and towards the end of the meeting, a parent was clearly, and I'm looking at Heather because she also was part of this, but parent was clearly upset about some things that had happened with their student, their child. And it was a little bit scary at first, the way the person approached the area that we were in. So, I just kinda said, can you come over here? And Heather came over, too, because she recognized that the parent was very escalated. And we sat, we literally, I think it must've been a good half hour, just listening and working through that. And then, the student was, was older and also entered the conversation and then saying, okay, so what's the plan gonna be? What's the follow-up? Let's, let's, I'm gonna call you tomorrow and we're gonna set up a time, which we did. We met with them again. I went to the high school and met with the student, which I had said I would do and was okay with the dad and just kind of letting him know that we, we heard you. This is a really tough situation. So, what can we do to support you? What do you need right now? And what can we continue to do to, to make that experience better for your child? And that continued on and got some students some resources and got connected with other adults. And so, just even though the person coming in was what I would call pretty hot, working through that and just taking the time to listen right then and there was, was critical. And then, started to build that relationship and, and build some trust. Right? What I, what I said, I did. Right? We're back to where, exactly where we started, the four quadrants of trust. I cared about him. I care about you. Where I'm sincere. I'm listening to another point of view that I don't necessarily agree with, but it's important, so let's, let me listen. And then, what I said was gonna happen, happened. And I have the skills and the knowledge and the mindset to make that happen. So, just looking at all those four quadrants, thinking about that and then engaging and working through that to build some trust. Yep.
I have one. So, it, it has been a rough few years, but not just the last two. It's, it's just been in a constant state of transition for like five years now, six. If you are hired and you, you know, on your first day, in your first week, month, year, what are your priorities gonna be to get everybody kind of, to use your word, de-escalated? To, to, to start providing a sense of safety and stability? What are the big changes you would like to be working on and, and how would you prioritize them?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's a big change. I think it's an approach, a different approach. And I, it's, it's really foundationally building trust and authentic relationships from that appreciative stance. And so, how do we use our SLT, our building-level leaders, our educators to do that with our community members? How do we have that common but flexible message? Right? That when I say I'm gonna have, be available on this day of the month, that I am available on the same month. When I say our, we're gonna get back to you within the 48 hours, I'm gonna call you back, it happens. Right? Being reliable. And then, really exhibiting that we do, we care. I, I think that, you know, the rough years, it, when you think about those quadrants of trust, that every area was touched for people, including us. And so, you know, how do we rebuild that? I think you have to start back with the foundations of we have to build the relationships. We have got to listen. We've gotta sit at the table with people that don't necessarily share our point of view. We're back to the DEIJ, right? Learning to what I come to the table with and how to hear that when it isn't my point of view and how do we have that good conversation? Doesn't mean we walk away, I'm not trying to make you think my way and you're not gonna think my way, but how do we support each other to do what's best for our kids? So, I really think that we've gotta go out there and kinda pound the pavement to build those relationships. And whether it's through, you know, board meetings, like being at board meetings more than just, it might be that two of us are at board meetings and we say, you know, we're gonna stay half an hour after or things like that. Like, just, just getting out there and communicating and spreading the message with consistency, I, I'm hoping will de-escalate some of the frustration.
Go ahead.
One more question for me. We've talked about many stakeholders in the room and selfishly, I wanna ask a question on behalf of these stakeholders here, our board. Our system is set up so that the school board, I mean, oversimplifying, we manage policy and budget. And our superintendent manages education, operations, staffing of the district. And that partnership is so critical for youth outcomes to be really high. So, I'm wondering what you think is the key to that successful relationship and partnership? And this is a really big job. What in return do you need from us in terms of solidifying those youth outcomes for our kids?
It's a great question. Thanks, Kim. I, I think what I have to offer is having high integrity and being honest and being willing to hear when things aren't going well and then working with all of you to let, give us as a team, what are your ideas to improve that? And I know we've been focused on communication and that's kind of our, what we've been doing as a joint board lately. But certainly, it could be any topic, whether it's de-escalating and building those community relationships. I, I think that that open line of communication and consistent communication is important. And I don't mean about agendas and, and kind of the nitty-gritty nuts and bolts of working with boards. It's more about, I know what Allison does and I know her trauma background is super strong and so, I'm gonna go to her and use her as a resource, like making those connections. You know, I know Heather's background. I know if I'm trying to think about marketing and organizations and how to move an organization, I would, might go to Heather, look, can you help us? So, I think utilizing the expertise that's on this board is also critical because there's a ton of expertise. I know special ed law, I can go to Patrick and go, what, you know, what do you think? We're getting some consistent issues in this area and sit with Renee and Patrick. And so, I think bringing people in and their level of expertise is, is critical and helps, again, build kind of that common language of all of us. You know who I am. You know who our senior leadership team is. And so, when the hard conversations come for public input, we all know, okay, this is, this, we're, we're together. this, we're, we're together, we're a team. And I guess that's when you say, how can we help you? I really want it to be a team. That's what we are. We have to be. We are very large and a very complex system. And without all being on the same team and working together, and I don't mean all agreeing, I just mean being on the same team and understanding and being willing to hear those other points of view, work through them, and then continue to move forward, is really what I hope for. You're welcome.
So we have, shockingly, like 11 minutes still. And so what I'm just gonna ask is, do you have any questions of us?
I really don't have any questions. I do have just one comment, if I could do that. I just wanna thank the board for taking this process so seriously and making it a fairly rigorous, extensive process and involving all the stakeholders. I think that was important to do. It was, certainly was important to me to make sure that as I'm hearing and listening, that I do have the skills and dispositions to move this district forward with our team of amazing educators and amazing administrators. That was super helpful for me, because I wasn't sure, right? Is it a good match? And so I appreciate you putting so much time and effort into this process and allowing me the opportunity to be part of it. So I just want to say thank you. And it was a long, rigorous process, but it, it was good. It was good for me. I feel good about what I heard, and I feel like my core is aligned to where, what people are looking for. And so that's important.
Great. Thank you very much. So with that, I think the interview is complete. Yeah? So thank you very much. So I think our, I, I hear some rumors over here that, oh, quick break. We've added some value to some people.
Before we take a break, what I would suggest to do is that we're gonna have a need to go into non-public session. Is that we make that motion now, give an opportunity for people to sort of clear the room and whatnot, because we'll meet in this room, and we can also incorporate sort of input. So I think our next item is to have a motion for a non-public session, so that we can continue discussion. I've got a second here, and if it passes, we can go into a non-public session, incorporate a break. So can someone make a motion?
I'm, I'm so moved.
Patrick, quick point of order. Can we just state the RSA, so we've got that?
Oh, yeah. Letty's gonna have it here.
Your mic?
Your mic, please.
Phone's turned off. Thank you. That would be helpful. Let's do this again. Actually, let's start over again, just quickly. So we're, so we're making a motion to go into a non-public session. We state the RSA that it's under.
I would actually like to make a motion to go into non-public session, non-public session under our New Hampshire RSA 91-a colon 32c.
Okay. Which is, what does that relate to?
Matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any, I should have provided room for this, too. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, then we take a roll call vote with something to go into non-public. Say aye.
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 We'll just have two people. Hold on a second. We have two people that are also online. They're both raising their hands and indicating that they are both saying aye as well. So just to be clear about that. Okay, so we are now in non-public session, but we'll give an opportunity to clear the room and whatnot. Also incorporate sort of a five, seven minute break.
Thank you.
Mr. Fran.
Shh. Where's Chris?
He's here.
What?
Where's Chris?
He's here.
Oh.
He walked in.
Oh, he did.
Okay. We're back in public session. So, do we have any motions that anyone would like to bring forward? Go ahead, Don.
I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16.
Could you have a second? Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second? Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Do you have any other motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to offer Dr. Esther Asbell a three-year contract as the superintendent of SAU 16. Could you have a second?
Okay, one second. Do you have any discussion on the motion in the second?